There we go. You just didn't want to do the pledge, did you? All right, we'll need a roll call, please.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Lopez?
Here.
Commissioner Seifer?
Here.
Commissioner White O'Neal?
Here.
And Chair Dickerson?
Here. One little piece of business before we move on to the approval of the planning commission minutes, and that is that items number four and five will be swapping. So we will hear the zone text amendment for shopping carts and containment ordinance first, and then we will hear the public art section as the last item. So let's see, approval of planning commission minutes for July 5th. If the commissioners have had a chance to look over the minutes, we are going to need a motion.
I move that we approve the planning commission minutes of July 5th, 2017.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
Me.
Motion carries. Public comment period. Each member of the audience may address the commission on any subject within the commission's business. Each member of the audience and each subject is limited to discussion of three minutes or as otherwise directed by the chair. This is for items that are not already on the agenda, so if there's anyone who wants to talk about anything or pontificate about anything that is not on the agenda, by all means you can. Seeing none, thankfully, we will. So consent calendar. The consent calendar is approved with one motion. These items are read only on request of commission members. Should anyone, including members of the public, wish to discuss or disapprove of any item, it must be dropped in the blanket motion and considered as a separate item. I would like to have item number one pulled from the consent calendar. Do we have any others that will need to be pulled? No? Okay. Then I need a motion for items number two and three.
I move that we approve items two and three on the consent calendar.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. We'll move on to item number one, the new item number one, which is the Estrada Produce Plan Development Permit located at 1932 North Cescar Lane. I kind of got this for staff that were not aware that I was going to pull this. Frankly, I think there are a lot of issues that the planning commission needs to take a look at more in depth, and so what I am proposing is that we continue this particular item to the next study session and where we will take a look at it at that time. So I am going to make that motion. And I need a second.
What is the date of the next study session?
The date of the next study session should be August 3rd.
So to August 3rd. I'd like to move this to the ...
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Thank you very much. Item number four slash five, the zoning text amendment for shopping cart containment ordinance. And we'll need to hear from staff.
Thank you, Chair Dickerson, members of the commission. I'll be giving the staff report tonight. I'm going to, I brought the PowerPoint that you saw before with the shopping carts. I'm going to dispense with that. I think the, I'm prepared to show it if there's a request, you know, for the, for the public, but I think that the staff report lays out pretty much what the purpose of the ordinance is and makes the case for why it's necessary. The commission's also looked at this proposed ordinance in draft form for two study sessions prior to tonight. So I'll try to be brief because I know that most people are here for the public art master plan item. The city law enforcement personnel has, had approached the city attorney's office over a year ago to do something about shopping carts in the city. Not only are the shopping carts frequently abandoned by customers who are maybe not able to, maybe don't have personal transportation and then take the groceries home and then just leave the carts on the sidewalk or in an alley. These, they're oftentimes illegally removed from parking lots by homeless and transient persons. And they put them to all sorts of uses. In addition to storing personal belongings, we've had them, we've seen them used for like fires, for grates, for cooking, for shelter, makeshift shelters. And unfortunately, even for the storage of urine and feces in buckets, which is a surprisingly common use, they, they do that for, you know, to try to prevent, to keep as much sanitation as possible, but obviously that's not very sanitary. This, in addition to presenting a health hazard to personnel that are required to deal with the carts, it's also a potential health risk to the public when the carts are returned to the owners if they're not properly sanitized. The amount of time that city staff is required to deal with shopping carts is highly significant. I do have Michelle Tassev with Code Compliance here tonight, and she can answer some specific questions you may have. But oftentimes, the police will come across a person who's using the cart for storage of personal items. They can't do that, so the cart is impounded. The items are often impounded with it. They have to be stored somewhere. They're usually stored at the landfill. Our municipal code and state law requires a 90-day period. That involves transporting oftentimes by the police that have their own vehicle for doing that, but also they sometimes get solid waste department involved. City rangers are also impacted by this. There is tremendous amount of time and energy that goes into dealing with the shopping carts because they're not being contained on the premises of the shopping cart, the businesses that use them. One reason is that the California shopping cart law in the Business and Professions Code is kind of an industry friendly law, and it pretty much ties the hands of cities who would like to impound these shopping carts right away. Cities can impound them, but they have to send notice to the cart owner and give them three days to pick it up. And then if they do so, they can't charge an impound fee. They can also notify the businesses if they see a cart and tell them, oh, it's on such and such location, and give them three days to pick it up before they can be impounded and a fee charged. The city, even if the city does impound a cart, it can only issue a civil fine in the amount of $50 after the fourth cart in a six-month period. So at one point, the city recreation and parks department ran a shopping cart retrieval program, but it was just too expensive. So staff was, staff researched alternative ways to address this problem and came across an approach pioneered by the city of Glendale in California that requires, that uses the city's police power under the zoning code to require shopping cart owners to maintain the carts on their premises. The shopping cart law does preempt state, does preempt local ordinances, except it allows local agencies to adopt a law that requires containment of shopping carts. Our proposed ordinance basically assumes that the shopping cart owners are innocent until proven guilty. We assume as a starting point that the businesses are in compliance. What does that mean? That means that no more than three of their carts will be found off the premises during any 24-hour period from basically midnight to midnight. We call that the cart loss threshold. And if any time that happens, then the business would be found in violation of the threshold, and then the ordinance kicks into effect or takes, there's action that can be taken. The first action would be a, service of a notice of violation. That would require the business to prepare a application for an administrative conditionally use permit with a cart containment plan, and the business would have to propose methods it would use or it's going to employ to maintain the carts on its property. Obviously, there's a strong incentive for businesses now that the ordinance is passed by the city council. There's a strong incentive for them to figure out this issue before this happens, and that's part of the goal. The goal is to get the businesses to voluntarily comply, but if they don't and they exceed the cart loss threshold, we will pursue enforcement by issuing the notice of violation and making them get the, the permit. Community development director will issue the permit if he believes that the proposed solution, measures that are going to be implemented will solve the problem. If not, he'll kick it back and ask them to provide a better plan. Eventually, when the plan is approved, as long as they're not in violation of the cart loss threshold, again, they, there will be no further consequences to them. If they're, if they are found in violation, then staff can utilize other code enforcement tools, such as administrative citations, up to $1,000 per incident based on the officer's discretion, and also other things such as compliance orders and administrative penalties. There are other requirements of the ordinance that are not significant for the purposes of tonight's hearing. Finally, I just want to let you know that in response to one of the study sessions, we did reach out to 60, 60 businesses in town that use shopping carts. Actually, I'm sorry, about, about 48 businesses and 14 letters to corporate management of those businesses. A meeting was held in Shepherd Hall. About 30 days notice was given. We only received a few calls ahead of time from one or two people that said they couldn't make it, and they asked, they asked questions. On the day of the meeting, attendance was very poor. We only had representatives from five businesses, less than, about 10%. And most of them were not opposed to the ordinance, they just kind of had to throw their hands up in the air, they're not sure what to do. And one good thing that came out of that meeting is some ideas were kicked around, and they came up with some ideas that they might be able to utilize to help solve the problem prior to the ordinance taking effect. That concludes my staff report. I am available for any questions, as is Officer Tassev.
Thank you very much. Obviously, we don't need to hear from the applicant in this, so do we have questions from the commission?
I did. At our study session where we went over this in much greater detail, I don't know if it's you or the code compliance indicated that there are a couple of stores that are the, have the biggest problem with losing their carts. Is there any chance that they, somebody attended the June 15th meeting?
Commissioner White O'Neal, members of the commission. One of the businesses that is a particularly troublesome one did attend.
Great.
I won't embarrass them, but the biggest violators did not show up.
Okay.
But at least one of them did and seen.
Did they respond at all to the letter? Is there any sense that they're aware that this is happening?
Yes.
Okay.
I would say that their response at the meeting was very good, much to maybe the surprise of the law enforcement personnel who were there and had been trying to get them to take some action. They seemed surprised by their willingness to take that action.
Great.
So they did have some positive outcomes.
Thank you.
Further questions? Okay. No further questions. We do have, there is no written communication for this, but we do have a, we do have a public speaking thing from Glenn Morris. Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Glenn Morris of the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce. I, I wanted to just make a couple of points on this. I think generally we would be in support of the ordinance. I, I do want to take a little exception to some of the tone in this. I think there's a little editorial comment about the state legislation being business-friendly. I'm reminded often by our city manager and city council that we are a city, business-friendly city, so I would hope that wouldn't be seen as a negative. And I think portraying the businesses who are victims of a crime ultimately, when their property is removed from their, their premises as the violators, sets me a little, feels a little, feels a little off in terms of tone. But the primary point I want to make with this, in a prior community that I was involved in, we addressed the same issue, and I think we took it one step further. In addition to dealing with the fact that we need to get the carts back to their owners, you have to at some point, I think, as a community, address the demand side. Why are the carts being removed, right? And in many cases, it's because there are people who are using them as mechanisms for storing the personal belongings, right? This is now their, their home in a sense, or their storage facility. And so in addition to an enforcement piece, the other city that I was involved with worked with a local nonprofit that, that works with the homeless community and provided an alternative facility where they could store their belongings, have access to them at different times during the day, and essentially removed the need for them to keep everything they own with them at all times in, in the shopping cart. So we, they tried to address it from both sides, reducing the demand component and then saying, okay, we've, we've removed the incentive for people to take your carts, now we need you to step up and be, be more active in collecting and preventing them from leaving the property and all of those kinds of things. And so I, I would encourage the city to look a little further at some other examples. I know the community I was in didn't invent that idea out of whole cloth. It was, you know, it had been tried in other communities within the state of California. I could, I could get you that information. But, but I think that we're addressing half of the issue here, and we're not addressing the full side, both sides of this issue. I encourage us to continue working on that. I'm disappointed it didn't get better turnout. I wish we'd have been involved in helping to get the word out. We'd have, we'd have probably made a few extra phone calls and tried to drive some folks. So as this continues, we'd love to work with the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morris. Okay, there are no more public comments. Any last statements?
Thank you, Chairman Dickerson. I would like to clarify, I, I didn't say the law was business-friendly. I said it was industry-friendly, and I guess I should, that's shorthand for saying that there was lobbying involved. And to be fair, the reason why the law was passed, as I understand it, is a lot of cities were taking advantage of the carts, the situation with carts. They were impounding them and charging impound fees, and so the legislature felt the need to step in because cities were abusing, using it as a source of raising revenue, which I certainly wouldn't support. That is not very business-friendly. But the lobbying that led to this law was an industry-friendly one, and it has negative consequences on the public peace. I didn't mean to imply that we weren't business-friendly. As a matter of fact, the fact we had the meeting and that we are crafting the ordinance in such a way that we're assuming the businesses are in full compliance until proven otherwise, I think is an attempt to show that we are willing to work with them. And at that meeting, we made it clear that we would explore many different ways to address the problem. I didn't go into it here because it wasn't relevant to the ordinance, but one idea was that they might, right now, there's not a shopping cart retrieval service that's actually working. There's not, there's not one that has, there's not one that makes enough money to do it because the stores aren't, there's not an incentive to hire one. So the thought was, well, with this, there might be an incentive. The stores could get together and have a very active shopping cart retrieval business that would be funded adequately and could actually do the job, and maybe not even, the ordinance would never even be required to take the next step about the notice of violation. So like I said, we will work with the businesses. I want to make that clear for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stinko. Any questions? No. I actually knew, I guess, one question is, do you, are you, when you say you'll work with the businesses, if we, if you end up in a situation where you have, you end up with a violator, someone who's had three or four carts in the 24-hour period, are we looking at it, at these fines automatically kicking in, or is there discretion at that point, especially if it's over the course of a week and people are still kind of getting the feel for things, and the businesses come forward and saying, we're trying something here, you know, will you stave off those, these $1,000 fines, or are these things just rolling through regardless?
Chairman Dickerson, members of the commission, thank you for the question. We won't be issuing any fines at first. The worst thing that will happen was a notice of violation that will alert them to the problem and require them to come up with methods to contain their carts. And we're not proposing any specific methods. We will suggest methods. They could go the expensive route, like the wheel locking technology that Viata uses, or something maybe just making sure that if there are problems or the carts are getting taken at night, maybe bringing them inside and locking them up or something. Maybe a coin system like they use in Europe. There's a lot of different ways to do it, and whatever works for the business that will, they'll, they'll propose it, and then staff will review it and say, yeah, that could work, and we'll give you a chance. And if it doesn't, we don't necessarily, we will use our discretion. If, if it doesn't work, we'll give them another chance if they show that they're willing to try something else. We definitely will only use the fines basically if there's really no other, if we're not getting any response and somebody's really not trying to work with us.
You're looking for egregious offenders.
Yes, that is the goal.
Everyone else is trying to work with.
The businesses. We, we're actually quite sympathetic with the businesses, but the impact on the city, the city is, this is a cost that's being externalized to the general public by the, by the, by the stores. Maybe they don't intend it to be, but it is. And so we need to, you know, we, we need to protect the public's dollars, and this is one way, one tool to use. As Mr. Morris had said, it's not the only tool, and we do need to work the other side of the problem, but this is what, this is just one piece of the puzzle.
Thank you very much. Further questions? No? Okay, nothing, nothing else from the public? We'll bring it from the, close the public portion of this and bring it back to the commission. We're going to need a resolution or any discussions people want to have about the item itself. The resolution number is 2733.
Thank you, Chair Dickerson. On this particular subject, we did go through a pretty extensive study session, and we were, for anyone that wasn't there, what's happening with the shopping carts, it's what our officers and our public officials are having to do is some pretty nasty work that really isn't in their purview. Rather than fighting crime or protecting the public, they're actually kind of sanitation officers and kind of monitors of people's goods. So on, on this particular item, I understand that it's not maybe crafted the way you would. This is something that's going to the city council. There's some time to think about, maybe some other issues on this, but in, in my mind, something has to be done immediately on this. Our officers are, they're just, some of the things that are going on that we're not seeing that were in the study session, it's, it's pretty nasty stuff. And so I'm in favor of this.
Anything?
I'm in favor. I think we did discuss it quite at length at the study session. We discussed the health part of it, and it's, and I'm in agreement with it.
Ms. White O'Neal?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement too, and I'm, I'm glad to see that the onus initially seemed to be penalizing the homeless, the poor, and the mentally ill, and I'm glad that that has changed and it's become just more of a business issue. I believe the shopping carts are a marketing and a sales tool for the businesses, and they need to take responsibility for them, and I think the ordinance does that.
Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Initially, I was a little lukewarm on, on the whole ordinance, not really knowing what was going on. When code enforcement brought together the amount of resources that, public resources that are used in, in trying to curtail the problem, it really sent a message, and I'm glad that the city's working with the businesses and Mr. Morris, who's part of the chamber, if, if they can talk and you'll get a little bit more of the, the word out there to what's really going on, I mean, that's a win-win for all of us, and I, I'm in support for this ordinance.
I, I agree with the other commissioners and Commissioner Lopez. I, you know, when I initially heard about it, I was like, meh, you know, but when you start hearing from code enforcement, man, it's some really nasty stuff. And it's, I'm also glad that, that we're not putting this on the backs of the poor and the homeless by giving citations to them. I think that it is a, a joint problem by the business community and, and by city officials. So I think the fact that we're going to have some, some tempering of, of things by the, by code enforcement, so then work with the, the business community to get these things through and, and get all straightened up. I think it'll improve our community tremendously. And so with that, I.
Chair, Chair, I apologize. I forgot to mention something, and I apologize for that. There was a mistake on the packet that was published.
And the whole thing falls apart.
No. Unfortunately, you're just making a recommendation, and you're, and you were given the gist of the ordinance. For some reason, the ordinance wasn't actually attached.
We, we got it.
Now, you received a copy of it. I do want to point out that I did make, since it wasn't basically, since it wasn't, since it wasn't published, and there was a chance that, I did remove one thing that was, there was a section in the ordinance that was a severability clause, the one that says, if anything's found unconstitutional. It was originally 12-55.06. I realized that we don't put those in the code itself because it would just be over and over and over again. We put it in the ordinance. I moved it to basically section, section three of the ordinance. And for the public, there are copies available for anybody that wants it, and will be made available on the website as a last-minute addition. We do apologize for not having it available to the public, but the gist of the ordinance was, was in the staff report, and you were provided a copy of it as soon as the air was made.
Will, will it do anything to alter the, the resolution and the calling for a resolution? I mean, do they need to specify this?
No, just make sure you reference this document, the one that was distributed tonight.
Okay.
This is the correct version.
Okay.
Anything to add, Chair?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. All right. As I said, we're going to need a, it's for resolution number 2733, and once again, referencing the, the document that we received up here.
Okay. I move that the planning commission by resolution number 2733 recommend that the city council approve zoning text amendment Z 2017-0003, which was ordinance that was distributed tonight, at tonight's meeting, not the one in the binder.
I second.
Okay. We'll need a roll call, please.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner White O'Neal?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifer?
Aye.
And Chair Herna, Chair Dickerson?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work by city staff. We appreciate that. Okay, we are going to be moving on to what was item number four, the city of Santa Maria Public Art Master Plan. We have an announcement from a, from one of the commissioners?
Yes, Chair Dickerson. I think the public perception is that I'm in the development business and that it wouldn't be suitable for me to sit in on this. I'm not sure if that's true. I didn't start off biased on this particular instance, but because of some things that have transpired, I, I am a little too biased to sit on this, and I am going to be recusing myself.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Seifer. Okay. Give me just one second. Why don't we go ahead and hear from staff? Mr. Smitherman, I assume you're the staff of note.
Good evening, Chair Dickerson, commission. I feel like I need to introduce you back there, so I hope you can see me okay. I'm, how, how quickly slide we'll go through. We have seen this document before at two study sessions. It's been made available at some other occasions which we'll go through as well. Tonight, a little history about the art master plan was created in December of 2015 and edited by more than 20 organizations representing organizations such as education, business, arts, foundations, and so on. The Recreation and Parks Commission approved the plan to move forward to the planning commission in, on October 11th of 2016. Since then, we've had the two study sessions. Community input opportunities have been provided now through four Recreation and Parks Commission meetings, two planning commission study sessions, and a general public community meeting held at the Abel Magano Community Youth Center. We'll go quickly through the goals, if that's okay, Chair?
Great.
The, the art master plan has eight goals, and each one identifies a certain area. The first goal is to use public art to support identity, intertwining art culture here in Santa Maria neighborhoods, and ideas to create a memorable urban landscape. What you'll see there is our first utility art box on the left, and this, to the right, is some new sculptures now in San Luis Obispo at their skate park. Goal number two is to embrace public art as a citywide beautification effort, to facilitate public art and public art partnerships, and that's really important, with not only city departments but private developers and arts and cultural organizations. Our goal number three is to celebrate Santa Maria's unique entries to its downtown areas and neighborhoods by enhancing or continuing to enhance, we've started some of this work, with works of local artists. This, you have often seen vinyl banners hanging up and down streets. This is a permanent banner. It is laser engraved in, in. It is laser engraved, and something we can use to identify different neighborhoods. The top right is an amazing work, which is a Manhold cover used in Japan, and they use different insignia and logos to identify each of the neighborhoods. And the bottom right is a flag flown in Florence. Each little neighborhood in Florence has their own flag representing their neighborhood. We could use public art to employ a more walkable city, and we've seen this in many cities around. Lompoc with their amazing crosswalk program and so on. And looking to the left, you'll see pictures of a couple different sky bridges, which we have one here, and what we could do to beautify that. We have 27 amazing community parks. I might be a little bit biased there, but we could use art in parks, and we're starting to do that with the renovation at Buena Vista Park. We could support temporary artwork installations, and the utility box art is considered temporary because it's a five-year lifespan. We actually anticipate it'll go longer, but, you know, that's one of the ideas. And then really show it off in areas with strong pedestrian and vehicular traffic. We have these Friday night events downtown now. We could easily do events and activities based around the arts there. And then goal eight is to allocate more funding for public art commissions. Currently, our potential public art location map on the left, and I do have this available at the office, sorry, I don't have a hard copy for you today. We have identified 77 utility boxes in the city of Santa Maria that the city owns. We currently have five of them painted. We have a ways to go. The map on the left also demonstrates all the public art that's currently owned by the city and maintained by the city. The maintenance is very low and really only constitutes a really negligible amount of time over the course of a year to maintain. We have, actually, the five utility boxes is listed on that, and about seven other pieces, three at the library, a mural, an art kiosk. So overall, we do not have a lot of city-owned public art. On the right, we do have a website now active on the city website, a link to it, that shows all the public art in Santa Maria. It is a very small picture, but it does show the art, the description of the history, and the location. And what we're trying to do down the road is to encourage a more walkable city by providing maps and different resources for people to use to check out all our great art. There are financial benefits, just recently posted, and I do mean really recently, within the last couple weeks, by the American for the Arts, who did this arts and economic prosperity study. This is just Santa Barbara County numbers, and this is for individuals and the organizations hosting these different art activities, events, programs. You'll see that the total direct expenditures just here in Santa Barbara is close to $200 million. What that means is it has created 5,857 jobs. That's full-time equivalent. We have, the resident household income has increased by $131 million and change, and our local government revenue, what we see in Santa Barbara County, is over $8 million. The state also sees their portion of $10 million. I've been getting a lot of questions, you know, we've been working on this for a while, so just some real quick definitions. Public art really means works of art installed in the public right of way where public has access to view. They can include sculptures, painting and graphics, photography and digital work, mosaic, tile, chalk, sand art and sculpture, and temporary displays, that's important as well. Capital improvement determined by the city council to be of artistic value. And this is a really strong point, because one of the questions we get is, what about landscaping? Is landscaping considered art? And I know that we've discussed this as well. Yes, landscaping could be considered art, topiaries, sculptures, waterfalls, things like that. And then any other art form determined by the city to satisfy the intent of the section. So this list is not an end-all list. What it does is it provides the opportunity for a developer to say, you know, what about this? Will this work? Definition and contributions. A municipal construction project is a project led by the city that's $500,000 or more and paid for wholly or in part by the city, and it does not include infrastructure. We're looking for a 1% contribution towards the art fund for municipal construction projects. Private development includes, private development for those building four, or, I'm sorry, five or more houses valued at $250,000 or more. And then we added building permits valued at $100,000 or more. They would also contribute a half a percent to the public art fund. There is the arts-in-lu contribution, which if a developer chooses not to build art on their property that they're developing, they are able to then write a check to the city to deposit into the public art fund. If they choose to put public art on their site, it would be valued at what the artist determines, and then any, the difference, if it's less than the half a percent, would then also go into the art fund. So the contributions over the last three years, it gets a little tricky, so bear with me here. Over the last three years, this is the amount of actual building permit valuations that we've distributed through the city. What's not clear in this picture is what that really means as far as the value or the requirement to pay in. So we can't tell by looking at this picture, did they meet the threshold of $100,000 for private development? Did they meet the $250,000 and four houses for public development? And of course, the city has a different process. So just really ballparking, and this is a very bad ballpark, I have no premise to back this up, but let's say it's 40%, and that's, that would be eligible or required to pay the art fee. In 2016, that would equal $211,400. In 2015, that would be $239,400. In 2014, that would be $275,000, which sounds great, and we'll get to the cost of art right now. So this is definitely not the whole list of art that could be used to, could be used to purchase with these funds. Utility boxes, again, the most recent, at $1,000 a box. Only 72 more boxes to go, so $72,000. The small bronze in front of the library donated by Larry Lavignino, the retail value is $5,000. Murals, as you know, can be anywhere from $2,500, which is the one on the Discovery Museum, to $30,000 plus, depending on the size, the medium, and the location. Painted crosswalks, you know, range anywhere from $8,000 to $25,000. $8,000 is on the low end. It's a three-color, temporary, three-year type of crosswalk, where some cities, you've seen a big square used to paint, which is the higher value at $25,000. And again, depending on the medium they use to paint the crosswalk. And this great new sculpture on the right was just installed about four weeks ago in the city of San Luis, and it was $100,000. Now, keep in mind that none of this involves the prep work that goes behind the installation. This is just for those pieces. Some typical frequently asked question, should an artist do it for the exposure? I may have got a little attitude on this one, so bear with me. Artists have a skill. They've developed a skill. They've worked hard on the skill. We wouldn't ask a plumber to do a project in our house for exposure. We wouldn't ask a CEO. We wouldn't ask the landscaper to mow our yard for exposure. It would not be wise of us to ask an artist to do it for free either. The next question, why must art be original? Because art really is about the community, and when you commission artists to create a piece, you want it representative of that community, and that neighborhood, and the people in it. When you're looking at generic art online or through a large art house, it's often generic and mass-produced. And as we said before, is landscape and architecture considered art? It can be. We talked about the topiaries. If you go to Seattle, you can learn to do the cha-cha on the sidewalk with brass and late footsteps. You know, there's many means to consider landscape and architecture art. We just had fun at Raccoon Park, so we've created what could look like public art downtown. The Chicago Bean is now in front of Broadway in Maine, in front of Bank of America, and so on. And with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smitherman. Do we have any questions from staff? Ms. Hernandez?
You said landscape and architecture will be considered art. How will you value that?
It would be valued on what the cost of the build would be. So if a topiary, for example, is $10,000 to create a large garden piece, the artist would determine what the value of that would be.
And this piggybacking on that, so some art would appreciate and some art would depreciate.
Absolutely.
Topiaries will depreciate, but sculpture could potentially appreciate.
Absolutely.
And then I had a secondary question. I just wanted, I was not clear on, the municipal projects, the way the ordinance reads is that it will be for acquisition and installation of public art on the development site. So I was just thinking, if the soccer fields on West Stoll get built, public art, maybe a soccer field isn't maybe the ideal spot for public art, is there some flexibility where that art could go some other location?
Absolutely.
Or are we tied to having art at the municipal project site, regardless of the project?
No, that would be an easy change to reallocate, and that's the way a lot of cities do it. It's not required to be on the site. It could be at a different location, more visible, you know, better used, just more appropriate.
Okay.
Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How does the artist determine the value of his art?
There's a typical retail market value for art, and it would be, you know, you would really have to look and compare it with other art of similar style and types. The art piece, for example, in San Luis, it's $100,000. For a kinetic art sculpture, you can determine that by looking at the fair market value through other cities as well. It would be a slight negotiation, you know, and there's a little bit of flexibility in there, because we know that it has the potential of someone hiring an artist saying, this $250,000 piece is a trinket. So we would have to, again, work with the artist and developer to determine the fair market value for the piece.
We being the Parks and Recs Commission department?
It's not only the Raccoon Parks Commission. What our goal within the plan and in the ordinance, it does talk about acquiring art and the process it takes to acquire art. Most of this will be community-driven. Staff will actually have very little input. It will be hopefully representatives of the Planning Commission, the Recreation and Parks Commission, the Santa Maria Arts Council, which is our local nonprofit arts agency, and members of the public and businesses in the area.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Written communications. We have been given packets of items that have been written and sent in, so those should be put into the record. And then we will have public comments. They will be limited to three minutes each, and we're going to start off with Judy Garrett, and then Jeff Echols will be after. Ms. Garrett?
The new commissioners.
And if you could state your, yeah, state your name and address for the record.
My name's Judy Garrett. I'm at 300 East Park Avenue in Santa Maria, and I'm here representing the Minerva Club. We're dealing with a little bit of art in Buena Vista Park, and so I'm definitely for the art, and here's all I have to say. I was thinking of all the communities I've lived in all my life, my 80 years of my life, and that has been 10. They've all had art, beautiful art, in many, many places. The last one I lived in before Santa Maria was Cambria. It's quite a bit of art there. But I just think that communities that have visible public art are more pleasant places to live and more pleasant places to work. And I think they probably do better economically, and so I definitely think we ought to go for this.
Thank you very much. Jeff Echols, followed by Kathy Sharuna? Anyway, you'll ask.
Good evening, Chair Dickerson and Planning Commission members. My name's Jeff Echols. I'm the executive director of the Home Builders Association of the Central Coast. We cover both Santa Barbara County as well as San Luis Obispo County, representing over about 130 different member companies and well over 1,000 different head of household jobs here within your community in the Central Coast. First off, I want to applaud staff and your community members for the work that they've done on the master plan for the arts. Fantastic work. And it's tough to argue, I think we're all in agreement, that public arts enhance a community. What our association takes exception with is the way it's being paid for. I think you've got a fatal flaw in this approach. In economics, and I've got an economics background, we talk about unintended economic consequences. And paying for this by saddling that 1% fee upon new development, both residential and commercial, will have severe and dire unintended economic consequences.
Can I just correct her? It's a half a percent.
Half a percent.
It's not a percent. So it's half what you said.
I was reading the first document. So the methodology of how it's being paid for, that mechanism, needs to be looked at. It is no secret that we're in the midst of a housing crisis throughout the state and here locally, in our own community. Santa Maria has been known as one of the more affordable places to build. By saddling new development with this fee, you're starting to chip away at that affordability. And therein lies some of those negative economic consequences, the unintended consequences down the road. There's just absolutely no question that when you add to the cost inputs of a development, the developer has to pass those costs along to the purchasers. So you will be raising the price of particularly entry-level homes and pushing out some of the members of your community from getting on that very important housing ladder. So great job on the program, a flawed approach on how to pay for it. So at this point, it needs to go back to the drawing board respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kathy Sharuna? I'm sorry, I'm sure you'll let me know. Followed by Glenn Morris.
Thank you. It's Kathy Sherram.
Thank you.
Kathy Sherram, resident of Santa Maria. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I would like to speak in support of the master plan and its associated funding proposals. I disagree with the previous speaker. I think it's been proven that when a city embraces and incorporates art, it, its competitive edge is actually improved. It's more attractive, and people choose to live in and visit that city, and it ultimately attracts a skilled workforce. It's also been proven that even, I don't know why I'm standing on my tiptoes. It's also been proven that even small creative acts can change the perception of a sense of value and even safety in our neighborhoods, such as the utility boxes. I think they're beautiful. One of the reasons people are drawn to the Central Coast is because of its natural beauty. It's only fitting and smart to have our city and communities reflect and enhance that beauty. And I think, excuse me, I think this master plan will bring us a step closer to achieving that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Glenn Morris, followed by Dan Blau.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, glad to be back in front of you this evening. Let me start by just saying that I wish we weren't here having this conversation tonight, because I think it's going to be perceived that some of us are in opposition to the goals of this plan, and that is not the truth. I applaud the goals of the plan. I applaud the fact that staff has gone out and tried to look at other communities to learn some best practices. I wish they had looked at communities that were more analogous to Santa Maria and not places like Florence, Italy, and Seattle. Those are not communities that we can replicate today. As I said, I'm a firm supporter of the goals. We have a significant concern about how it's being funded. We believe that if this is a community value, that if the community wants this investment, the community at broad, at the broadest possible level, should pay for it. And there are mechanisms that you can do that. We have some technical concerns with some of the definitions in the plan. Those, I think, we can negotiate once we get past how we pay for it. That truly is the fatal flaw. In the spirit of learning from others, let me just briefly share with you an experience, again, in a prior community where I had the chance to work in a Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber was part of a coalition that stood up and started a nonprofit arts consortium where one didn't exist. The city- The city helped support the startup, and I believe to this day continue to contribute to some of its operational costs. They do that out of the general fund, representing the entire community. But they set that up as a nonprofit, and they've been able to use events, fundraising, grants, contracts with other public agencies, contributions from private sources, to pull multiple streams of revenue in to make an impact in the community. I think there are different ways that we can do this. Simply going back to the well and adding one more fee doesn't feel like the right way to handle this approach. Again, let me just read this final, and it was in my letter to you originally, but I want to reiterate it. First, the business community believes strongly that investing in the aesthetics and culture of the community brings significant value to existing and prospective employers and their employees. Second, we believe the investment to do that should come from the broadest slice of the community possible and not be required at the expense of any one subsection of the economy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dan Blau, followed by Lori Tamora.
Thank you. I'm Dan Blau. My address is 2637 Lawrence C. Avenue. I like my previous speaker and not opposed to the art program. I think it's terrific. I wish there was a nonprofit. If you do get that around, call me. I will make a donation. However, the way that it's being set up as a tax right now, I think is, one, not legal and not appropriate. I've heard the argument that this is not a tax. What made me really laugh was when I heard someone say, "This is just a reimbursement of the city for cost of doing business." Well, if that's not a tax, I don't know what a tax is. I want you to understand that I am a real proponent of AB 1600. I started out in the development business in the late '70s, early '80s, and before, in those days, before 1987, when AB 1600 was passed, I had to sit down and negotiate with all the public agencies as to who's going to put the signal light in the corner first. You know, there's four sections to the, four corners in there, and if you're the first guy, maybe you get by with it. The second guy, nope, now we have a traffic impact, got to have a signal. Then there was issues of things like better area crossing and other issues. So you were constantly negotiating with the municipality as to who's going to pay it when. Maybe you get reimbursed from other property owners, maybe you don't. Courts finally kicked that down. So thank God, one smart thing that this legislature did was to create AB 1600. Of course, it wasn't Republican governor, so that's why it passed. But now we have an issue where if I do a development and I'm impacting a, impacting a streetlight four blocks down, I pay a fee per route with everybody else in the city, and the city now has the money to do that kind of infrastructure. What it amounts to is my development now is putting more traffic on the road, so I'm paying for the improvements that traffic needs to do. With this art tax, we're not doing that. When you do an AB 1600 fee, you need to do two things. One, prove there's a nexus between the impact of the development and the item that you are requiring. And second, you need to have proportionality for the cost of that compared to my impact. You don't have that here. Show me the nexus. What impact is my new development having on art? It's not there. If you, and I did a little research to try and find out what other cities and municipalities are doing. It was amazing to me. Most of them that I looked at had an ongoing source of income for art that was not tied to development. And then they said, okay, well, for new development, we need them to make a contribution because everybody else in the city had already paid for a bunch of art. We're going to need more art because of new development? That's a nexus. But to come here and say that, that just the new development pays for the impact, there's no nexus. Now, just, I know I'm out of time, but.
Wrap it up.
I'll wrap it up. The other thing that I thought was interesting, a lot of them I looked at, once today I found that did have a proper nexus, was they were charging a fee for a building more than 50,000 square feet. Okay, well, there is a visual impact of 50,000 square foot or larger commercial building. So to offset that impact, you would charge them a fee to produce some beautiful art. But in your case, you are doing on almost any building, $100,000 or more. The other thing I find is difficult to understand.
Mr. Blau?
My last comment.
Okay.
Is that you're charged, you're forcing the city to pay a 1% fee whenever they do a capital improvement, which is basically increasing the cost of doing business in the city when you're already $4 million under budget.
Thank you very much. Ms. Tamora, followed by John, it's either Head or Hood, I'm sorry, your handwriting.
Good evening. My name's Lori Tamora. I've had the opportunity of doing business in the city of Santa Maria for 35 years. I work with ordinances and plans, master plans, AB 1600 fees, development projects. I'm in favor of the art. I love working with architects and landscape architects and builders and developers, putting projects together. What we have here are two legs of a table. This is a master plan, which most of the presentation that the staff made tonight is not in this plan. This is an ordinance, and everything that's marked in blue is inconsistent with the plan. All of these items, this is not a legal document for the Planning Commission to approve. So these are the two legs that are incomplete. The other two legs that are in this document is the administrative guidelines, which there are none, and there's no financial plan. How much money is actually going to be done and collected, and how's it going to be spent? If you turn to page, second page of this ordinance, there's a 10-step process. This 10-step process will cost each piece of art between $10,000 and $30,000 just to get approved. And I know that the staff doesn't understand that, but the process is so detailed, and so much work is going to have to go into justifying the art by design, qualifications, approval process, 90-day review. It says 45, but it'll take 90 because everything takes twice as long. So I want to point out, the city of San Luis, our neighbor, does not charge residential. So that's the first thing. What about Windset Farms? There's a huge project out at the other side of town that's being developed. Are you going to charge an art fee for a greenhouse project? Staff will not answer that question. All of the items that I provided in that letter that you received from me have not been addressed. This is an incomplete plan, and I'm sorry to say, I am for the arts. I'm not for bureaucracy. I'm not for committees. I'm not for extended time to get something approved. I think it's a disadvantage or disservice to the community to require a bureaucracy to approve art. And that's what this is. It's a new commission. It's a new process. It's a new cost. And I just, I'm sorry that we're here tonight to talk about this because I just think we're going totally in the wrong direction. There should be a nonprofit formed, and it should only be for the public spaces in this city that public art should be located, and it should be allowed on public streets, public right-of-ways. It's just been, I almost want to say it was slapped together.
Thank you very much.
And all of the art pictures that are in here are on public spaces.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tamora.
Let's start over. Thank you. Oh, approve it.
John Hood or Heed, I'm sure you'll let us know. Followed by Marty Fast.
Members of the Planning Commission, thank you for your consideration.
State your name and address for the.
Yeah, my name is John Hood.
Hood.
4619 Kenneth Avenue. This is citizen input. I am currently the Chair of the Fine Arts Department at Hancock College. I know firsthand that when communities commit to public art, they share a sense of pride and ownership in how art enhances their surroundings. This has been evident on my college campus, where students, faculty, and staff have a new sense of pride for the art on campus, with murals, sculptures, et cetera. In short, public art adds value to our city, curb appeal if you will. By adding public art to new and existing spaces, it sends a clear message that our community cares about culture and progress. This often leads to more commerce because businesses want quality of life for their workforce and want to be a part of a thriving, enriched municipality. Those from outside the community will want to visit and add to our economic prosperity, seeing that development places importance on aesthetics and visual stimulation. One of the great developers in the United States, David Berman, who was responsible for 23 super malls from the East Coast all the way out here to the West Coast, he was one of the pioneers of creating public art in his businesses. He was one of the first to bring public art into his malls, and he would say that it's a moral responsibility, and professionally it enhanced his businesses tenfold, the community coming to visit and being enriched by it. Finally, the young people of Santa Maria crave the creative stimulation of communities elevated by the arts of all types. Please help us continue to build a place where our children want to raise their own families in this Central Coast, which can be a wonderful opportunity, not only for my college, where we're becoming an epicenter for the arts, but I see Santa Maria enriching with new businesses coming in as we speak, as we see off the 101. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Marty Fast, followed by David Dennis.
My name is Marty Fast. I actually live in Arroyo Grande, 1684 Dowell Avenue, but I am a colleague of John Hood's. I teach at Allen Hancock College. I'm a member of the Art on Campus Committee, and I actually am the gallery director for Anne Foxworthy Gallery, which is one of the two art galleries noted in the handout. We've had a vibrant expansion of art on our campus through the Art on Campus Committee, which is made up, I think there are a few people here who are on that committee. We do spend time selecting art and hearing from artists and hearing proposals. It does take time, but I don't think it's the bureaucratic headache that it might have seemed to be by some speakers. I also am the President of the Santa Maria Arts Council. The council is a membership organization, nonprofit, and our members, we do have individual members, but most of the arts and cultural groups in Santa Maria are members of the Arts Council. There is unanimous support for this program through the council, and we are willing to become part of this process. We very much lend our support to this and hope that you will look at the communities of Lompoc and San Luis Obispo, which are not that different than Santa Maria, for the arts programs that they put out into the community. Help us make Santa Maria a better place to live and grow up, and vote for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. David Dennis, followed by Judy Frost.
Good evening. My name is David Dennis, and I live at 416 East Hermosa Street here in Santa Maria. In America, as in the rest of the world, cities and towns are in competition to be the city, the place where people want to live, where they want to visit, and where they want to spend their money. People choose their homes and business locations by the unique qualities a city has. When you take a property, public or private, and add unique art to it, it gives a feel that this is special property and enhances its value because the owners have put forth the investment and time and care to add something of beauty and of interest. Developers should contribute to and create public art because it's beneficial in attracting customers, tourists, and employees, and because in the long run, that contribution will contribute more unique and valuable property that will benefit the city's residents and the entire business community. I hope you support this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Judy Frost, followed by Craig Schaefer.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioners, and city staff. I hate public speaking, so bear with me.
Judy?
My name is Judy Frost. I live at 2956 Stardust Court in the city of Santa Maria, where my husband and I have lived since 1989. I am speaking in support of the City of Santa Maria Public Arts Master Plan, but my remarks are not mine alone. Just Google "public art," and you will find volumes of articles about the value of public art, the importance of public art. The results is based on evidential research, and there are also TED Talks on the importance of public art, so this is not just me up here giving you my opinion. Public art is a critical element in tens of thousands of cities around the world, and it is appreciated and adds value to the community. The existence of public art dates back to the beginning of civilization, so this is not a new concept, but rather one that has certainly stood the test of time. In the United States, the association of public art with a broad national purview was actually formed in 1872. Public art is often underappreciated, but there's a lot to applaud. It's free to the visitors. There are no tickets. People don't have to dress up. You can view it alone or in groups. It's open and accessible to everyone. Community art can also create attachment to one's community, which enhances property values, encourages pride of ownership, and adds value to the community. Social offerings, openness, welcomeness, and importantly, the aesthetics of a place, its art, its parks, and green spaces ranks highest as a driver of attachment in a community. Public art provides every member of the community easy visual access to public art. It strengthens cultural awareness, creativity, and innovative thinking in the community and can be a source of pride for all of the residents. Again, these are not my thoughts alone. These statements are backed up by independent evidence-based research conducted by esteemed organizations and institutions and credentialed individuals. This is a fact, not speculation. Public art in a community is a huge plus for that community and is a residence in terms of quality of life, property values, attachment to their community, pride in their community, and the list goes on and on. Things we all want for this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Judy. Craig Schaefer, followed by the last speaker, Laura Henderson.
Commissioners, thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Craig Schaefer. My wife Linda and I have lived in Santa Maria since 1979. Today, I'm asking you to say yes to art. This Arts Master Plan will ensure that as a city grows and faces redevelopment, public art projects will become essential companion components of the cityscape, murals, sculptures, everything that was presented to you tonight, and hopefully more. Art enriches a city with character, creates identity, makes it appealing to not just the residents, but helps attract visitors. Art allows us to explore new ideas and helps us better appreciate cultures near and far. It will strengthen the local economy while creating an enhanced sense of place. This is not a frill. Art enriches our lives in deep, meaningful ways. Art is what defines us as being human beings. You know the two most compelling factors for relocating to a new town? Recreation and cultural amenities. For that alone, art should be the cost of doing business for a more beautiful, more vibrant, and inviting Santa Maria. A percent for art is not a new concept. For decades, cities around the country have used this mechanism to enrich and beautify their towns. Santa Maria should join this parade. As Santa Marians, we need to support and encourage the expansion of the arts, not put up with a roadblock to its progression in our city. By approving this plan this board, and eventually the city council, will be sending a message up and down the coast that a new Santa Maria is on the verge of a cultural transformation. And that, with time, may become the envy of the rest of the Central Coast. I believe it is incumbent upon all of the citizens to insist that there is a pay-as-you-go program that will ensure an ongoing beautification of our city, and the city needs to move forward as so many other cities in the country have with a cohesive plan that will guarantee the creation of art in public spaces. the creation of art in public spaces. I sincerely urge you to say yes to art tonight. On behalf of the developers who have spoken, I do not see this as a tax, as they say. If you look at the fees required on development, schools, streets, roadways, retention basins, this is a drop in the bucket to what they have to endure, and they do have to endure a lot. I agree. But this is a benefit to all of us in the city, and I believe you have the reason there to go forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. And finally, Laura Henderson. Come on down.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Laura Henderson, 313 East West Flores Way. I'm here tonight to strongly urge you to adopt the resolution before you, as it is written. I come to you first as a mother. Our family has recently had the great privilege to travel to Japan. From the bustling cities to the small villages, the Japanese have thoroughly embraced art. Train stations, parks, bridges, manhole covers, art is everywhere, inspiring, beautifying, bringing peace, drawing visitors. I want that in Santa Maria, even if just a small fraction, for my family, for where we work, where we play, where we live. I come to you also as a public school teacher here in Santa Maria. The families that I serve don't go to the Getty on the weekends. Many of my students have never left Santa Maria. Many have never been to the beach. But let's all agree that we can appreciate the vast value of public art, as seen by the many public comments this evening, the positive feedback at public forums, and in the media. The question lies in the source of funding. I'm sure that you've all done your research and have found that while a percent for art concept is truly creative, it is not new. Paying for art in this precise manner is how it has been done in communities throughout the state and in the nation. The movement is especially gaining momentum in California. And I'm sure that developers in each of those over 350 communities have done their due diligence and have voiced their concerns. It's expected. Richmond, California designated 1.5% for public art because the city, quote, "recognizes the substantial economic benefits to be gained through the aesthetic enhancement of its public spaces and its increased ability to attract and retain commercial and industrial businesses through an enriched visual environment." In Long Beach, the mayor himself brought forward a percent for art proposal, and it passed unanimously. There are countless stories about commissions and councils near and far improving their communities through public art. As a mother, as an educator, as a resident, I urge you to have vision and adopt this master plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that is all the written communication and public comment. Mr. Smitherson, do you have any comments, or staff as a whole?
Thank you, Chair Dickerson. I appreciate the opportunity to speak again on behalf of the public comment. We've talked with a lot of people in this room about this project for quite a while now, and just to make sure that I touch base on a couple of the topics that were brought up tonight. There was a concern about the fee, the budget. Right now, the fee is proposed, that 95% of it would go through to public art, and 5% of it would be for administration. To come up with a formal, strict budget right now would be impossible to see. We can forecast, obviously, but we don't have hard numbers. I did try to propose and show what previous years would look like. We hear from the development community quite a bit that's in the room, but what we're missing is there's five or six other large developers building here in Santa Maria right now, and they're not here because they're aware that this is a normal fee. The expectation is there. A lot of these people, the Home Builders Association that's here is based in San Luis, so they're aware of this fee. This is not a new fee. And lastly, it has been with support from all of these agencies that drafted this plan. It is not going to be a quick process. We do not want it to be a quick process. We do not want artwork that doesn't represent the city of Santa Maria on any public space. So it will take some time. We know that, and we have a vested interest from the community to participate in that process. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smitherson. Any other comments from staff? No? All right, hearing none. I'm going to go ahead and close the public portion of this hearing and bring it back up to the Commissioners.
Before you close, public's in response to speaking, call Mayor and Director.
No, thank you though, sir. Let's go ahead and start with Mr. Lopez. Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question. AB 1600 fees, what approximate percentage is that cost to a project? Does anybody have 3%, 5%, 10%?
No, it's about $75,000 for every home builder in the city of Santa Maria pays into funds.
Sure. And those funds are distributed for future libraries, police stations, parks?
Schools.
Schools. Okay.
And if you look at our building fees here in Santa Maria, you'll find that we are middle of the road. Up and down the Central Coast, ours are right in the middle, and a half a percent would not sway that to a higher level of fees.
Ms. Mara? Thank you.
Ms. Bass? Are we just asking questions now?
Yes, of staff.
I think I'm clear. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes. There was a comment made that the document that was provided to the commission is not a legal document that we can use to approve. That's probably for Mr. Cinco. There was a comment made that the document that we were provided to approve by the commission is not a legal document.
Commissioner Dickerson, Members, Commissioner... Thank you.
Chair.
Chair. I was trying to get it all out. Members of the commission, Mayor. The document has been vetted by our office. We respectfully disagree. It is a legal document, and I would like to add that we have researched the issue of the fee. It's not a tax, and it's not an AB 1600 fee. It's authorized in the manner that, under the police power, for landscaping requirements, setbacks, general powers that the city has. The California court has upheld that, and it's not subject to Prop. 218. So it is a legal ordinance, in the city attorney's opinion.
Thank you.
Further questions? Ms. Martinez, no? I have a few questions. My questions, actually, I'll start off by saying I'll make my comment first, and that is that I believe the time is right, and the time is now for bringing art to our community. The mechanism of that, I think, is the question that we have that's really causing the sticking point here. With that being said, the comments that I have really are specific to the individual document, and so my question of legal is, if I start walking through this thing, and I and the other Commissioners pick apart little pieces of it, add things, subtract things, I mean, at that point, are we, if we were to approve this document, would we be approving the document that's before us, or would we be approving an altered version that we, that as the planning commission, we would suggest to the City Council, so it's not this document specifically, it's an altered version of this document?
Thank you, Chairman Dickerson, Members of the commission. You basically have three options. You can either recommend to the City Council that it not approve the plan. You can recommend that it does approve the plan as it's written, or you can suggest modifications, in which case the City Council would accept your recommendation for consideration and review it, but it would also have those other two options as well. In addition, it could also make changes of its own.
I see. So they wouldn't necessarily have our version and Parks and Rec's version? They would have, they would be able to do what they want with the thing?
Well, they would have the version that's before you, and they would see what changes you made, so they would have kind of both of them for them.
Okay. So with that in mind, let me just go through just a couple of things. The first is Section 105.03, C, the last, the third from the last sentence, at least 85%. That actually should be 95% as written. Is that correct? Okay, so we should change that. The second is also on 1053, and that's number six. Maintenance, repair, and insurance of public art on public property. I guess the question I have is, this is an ordinance for collecting revenue, and I do understand that this is one of the ways that they're saying that they can spend it, but, I mean, don't we already basically do maintenance, and aren't we under the general insurance? I mean, where would be the expenses here? I mean, should we, should that be an authorized expense, or not, or should it be eliminated?
Chairman Dickerson, you're asking a legal question, or a policy question?
Yeah. Well, let's start with the legal, and then we'll meander around to the policy.
Okay. Adding the, using any of the funds for maintenance, repair, and I'm not sure about insurance, but maintenance, repair could arguably be seen as ongoing government operations that could, and I emphasize "could" because my colleagues are, and the municipal law community are split on this point, it could mean that it becomes a tax, the fee becomes a tax, to the extent that it's used for maintenance, because that's a general fund expense that's supposed to be borne by normal government operations. However, it's a de minimis at best charge. As Mr. Smitherson said, the cost of maintaining public art is very small, and it arguably could be conceived, it's just, could be interpreted as a part of just the acquisition and maintenance costs. I mean, it's sort of, it could be interpreted that way. I will say that if that is eliminated, the legal risk that this fee would be found via tax goes to practically zero, in my opinion. With that, there's a small risk from a legal perspective. I believe it's defensible legally, but it does present a slight risk.
Thank you very much. As a policy matter, I mean, first of all, with the answer that we got, I, this Commissioner would actually prefer to have number six removed from the item. I would prefer there's no chance of it coming through as a tax, or being argued as a tax. And frankly, the other element to it is, I think by the city having, spending its own general funds for maintenance, repair, its insurance, et cetera, so I think it shows that they have a little bit more skin in the game, and I think that, I mean, for me, that's kind of the way I look at that thing. I wanted to ask the Commissioners, one of the concepts here is in lieu funds from developers, if they find a piece of art and they want to put it in their projects, that they can offset the art. I think this is problematic for a couple of reasons that I'll go into, but the first thing I wanted to know is, what is, let's say that we have a developer who puts a piece of art in the middle of their complex somewhere. How do you arrange for, I mean, who's doing the maintenance? Who's doing the cleanup on it? Whose piece of art is it? When they sell that development, or whatever, I mean, are they selling that piece of art with their development, or, I mean, can the city go in and take it, pick it up and move it somewhere? I mean, what are the elements of that? Have you gotten that any thought, Mr. Smitherson?
Absolutely. To value a piece of art that a developer does pick up, we could also use a competitive bidding process, just to address that. Once the developer builds it, it is public art, so we could assist with the maintenance and upkeep of the project. It could also be up to the developer to continue that as long as they, as long as they are managing the properties or a homeowners association.
What do you mean it could? I mean, is it on each individual basis that you make, you cut that deal?
Yes.
I see. Okay, for this Commissioner, I just would like to say I don't like the in lieu portion, and the reason why I don't is, I think it just, it muddies the waters tremendously. Trying to value what that piece of art is or isn't, if we're going to do a fee, we should just do the fee, just cut the check, and then the pieces go out to, the amounts go into the general fund, or the fund that's being set up. Okay, so that's that. And now we've got the, for me, anyway, of course, the big bugaboo that everybody's talking about, and that is, how do you fund this silly thing? And once again, I'm just going to make my comment on this, and that is that, like Mr. Moore said, I think that it should be, it should be funded by a wider group of people than just developers. But developers don't get all excited because. What I really mean is that, I don't think that going out and trying to assess a tax, a specific tax on an increase in a tax in some way, or I had another idea, and that was utility fees, or anything along that line. I don't think that that's, I don't think that that would, quite frankly, be, maybe it wouldn't be successful, I mean, to be perfectly honest about the thing. But I still do think this is a good program, and so what I would suggest is that for any building permit, up and down the line, a $20 building permit, or a $20 million building permit, that we do a half a percent fee, straight up, clean, everybody pays. And the reason why is because, as everybody has said, we are all benefiting. We are all benefiting from art. Although it's an additional expense to all those who are going to be getting, would be assessed this fee, ultimately, I think property values go up, quality of life goes up, everything goes up, and I think you could argue that over time, that developers are going to be able to get a better dollar for their pieces of property, or for their developments, and that our community is going to be made better. I'm wholly in support of public art, but I do think that we need to have a mechanism where we do not single out a single group and put it all on their shoulders. Now, I know it's, the amount we're talking about is not a tremendous amount additional. I mean, if you, I went ahead and did the numbers on that, and if you, if you take the average for 2015 and 2016 for permit valuations, then you're looking at, let's see, if it's the over $100,000 range, you're looking at about $100 billion as an average. And so if you're looking at the all projects range, is the same average, it's only about $115 million. So I know that it's not a tremendous amount of difference, but the point is that it's everybody, up and down the line, and I don't want developers to feel like it's just on them. With those, with that half a percent fee, you'd be looking at about, well, if you took the average, you'd be looking at about $573,000 a year. That'll go up, that'll go down, depending on how the things are. So that's my proposal, and I'd like to hear comments. Ms. Hernandez, why don't you go ahead and start?
Yes, I really looked at this specific guidance carefully. I read all the letters. I listened to all the comments, and even people who were opposed to it made comments as, this is a valuable program. Its investment in our community, its recreation and cultural amenities bring people here. Aesthetics and culture is important to our community. People will pay more for aesthetically pleasant things. We know that. It's common sense. The timing was an issue that it's not right, but if we don't do it now, when will we? We have to move forward. It's a step in the right direction. The last thing was funding. I agree that it should come from a broad-based source, not just the builders, and for that reason, I agree with Mr. Dickerson, that it should be something... reason, I agree with Mr. Dickerson, that it should be something that we all pay for if we're gonna be building. Santa Maria is at a hundred thousand, over a hundred thousand in residents, and if we don't start now, that we are growing, then we will never do it. And I think for that reason, it's important that we send the message to the community that it is important. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner White O'Neal?
I, I just wanted to respond to your suggestions about some of the changes. So with Section 10, 5.03, number six, I, I strongly think leaving in the capacity to use part of the percentage for maintenance, repair, and insurance, I think is critical. I think we can look to the Lompoc sidewalks as a, just a practical, real-world example. The sidewalk, or the crossing walks, they use the funding to design and paint the crosswalks, and they're beautiful, but they have no funding to maintain them. So the tire marks and the whatever, and, I mean, a few hundred dollars would have enabled them to just maintain them, and the last thing we want is to invest in art, have it be degraded because there's no way to maintain it. And if Mr. Sinco feels it's a reasonable use of funds, I think we need to have it. The insurance aspect, I think this is just purely a what-if, blue-sky scenario. If we suddenly invested in, had the funds to invest in a very expensive, one of a, you know, some very unique piece of art where we might need an additional insurance rider on it, I think we need to give ourselves the ability to use that money to pay for it. That's my feeling. Also, I think the art in lieu, we should keep it. A, it's common practice in other cities that do it, and I think it allows more flexibility for the developers. I think, I, developers by nature are creative people, they, they will have creative, good ideas about art, and I would like to see them be able to install or build their own art projects as an option. I also agree that spreading the percentage across everybody, my husband and I, if we go to get a building permit for something, we should pay the fee as much as Ms. Tamura should pay the fee. I, I believe, I agree with that. And then just in response to the project in general, again, as Parks and Rec Commissioner Henderson said, this is a common practice. Development fees is the most common source of revenue for projects like this. Possibly not the only one, you came from a community that did it a different way, but this is a very common practice, it's worked for decades. Our local developers and builders do business in the communities like San Luis and Santa Barbara that already have this fee, so I feel they're, they're prepared, they know how to manage the process. If they can do it in other communities, they can, they can manage it here, too. In my experience, I have never noticed in the towns and communities I've lived in that have a public art project like this, I have never seen property values go down, rents don't go down, and I've never seen development come to an abrupt halt. I don't expect that to happen here. And then rather than decrying this issue, I'd like to see the Chamber of Commerce use a public art master plan as a tool to really sell Santa Maria. I've been to plenty of workshops where other communities are trying to sell themselves, and showcasing their public art is always in their PowerPoint presentation, so I can't see really any downside to this.
Thank you very much. Mr., Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, no, I, I agree with everybody in the room. I think public art is very special part of community. I've, I've been all over the world, I've seen a lot of art in all these different places. It's, it's, it's very important. As a matter of fact, Allen Hancock College just approved, or is approving, a forty-eight million dollar arts complex. So that would serve the community as well. What I don't agree with is the mechanism that it is strictly towards the development aspect of it. I, I, maybe the misconception is that the, the developers don't do enough, have enough contribution to the community, when in fact, they do pay these fees that are for future schools, parks, libraries. You know, one percent on a million-dollar project, that's a lot of money.
Half.
Or half a percent on a million-dollar project, that's a lot of money. You have design professionals that can't even charge one percent of the total price of the project, because it, it will, it will not allow them to be taken on as part of that team. So my, my biggest issue with this is, is the funding. I, I think, as you both mentioned, that it should be a broader base, not necessarily the, the developers, but the community at large, whether that's done through some, put it out there to vote. I think you mentioned that in the, in the study session, and, and let's see the community come together if, if that's what, what they want for public art. For me, I, I think singling out the development industry, or the development community is, is not the right way to do it.
Thank you very much. Let me just make one comment to Commissioner White O'Neal. Number six, another concern I have with number six is that it's included in with the ninety-five percent for purchasing. What I would rather see then is it brought out as its own, its own item or put in with the administration. And then if it's included in with admin, we can either bump admin to seven and a half percent or something like that, and then they can split the, split, split that, rather than it just being put in there and without any restrictions as to what the percentage is. I, I want to see, if, if this passes, and if it makes it through city council and everything, I really want to see the most money possible being spent on buying art, not maintaining it, not filling out paperwork on it, just buying the damn stuff and putting it out. So I don't know if, if people would be more amenable to that is, is to throw it in and have it as part of, part of the admin fee, and we can either leave admin at five percent or put it up to seven and a half or something, if, if people are, are okay with that. What would you think?
I just, again, I, buying art for the public's use with public dollars has to be treated a little bit differently than buying your own personal art for your own personal use. So we need to make sure there's a mechanism in place, whether it's five percent, seven percent, part of the ninety-five percent, or something else, to, to maintain it, repair it, and ensure it if need be, because you can't invest in a project that everybody owns and then not have any way to properly care for it. So we, we just, I, so I don't know if Dennis, if Mr. Smitherman has a better sense of...
I agree.
Will the five percent cover it? Does it need to be in the ninety-five percent purchasing pool? You know?
Commissioner, just thank you. The five percent could be bumped up to seven and a half, most of the general care on a day-to-day basis, of course, would be taking care of, being, taken care of as we currently are with our, our art. It's really more about the rehabilitation is, is what we're talking about. Every once in a while, as you'll see, we're working at the Veterans Ave Government Building to, to get that painted and repainted, you know, that kind of restoration. I think that would probably be a better word choice than maintenance, because the day-to-day maintenance will be cared for. So I, I do believe a two and a half percent added to the administration fee would be sufficient for, for those projects.
Covering those, okay. Doug, did you want to weigh in on this?
I do, Chairman Dickerson, members of the commission. Because the municipal construction projects are required to pay a one percent fee, I think it's possible to limit the maintenance, the restoration expenses to what was put in by the municipal contracts. If we're not talking, we're talking a couple of percents of the whole thing, I, I would, I would prefer to see that, just to make sure that the ordinance doesn't run afoul of Proposition 218, I'm just concerned about ongoing maintenance or restoration expenses that should be, like I said, it is arguable that it is part of public art, you know, you have a car, you have to change the oil, but let me use an analogy, under Proposition 218, we can charge whatever we want without a vote of the people or approval of the ratepayers to charge a connection fee for water, because once you decide to connect to the water, that's a voluntary choice. But once you connect, you become a customer, the fee that's charged can only be approved by approval of the ratepayers. And I see this as a, as an analogy, as like, we're asking people to make a, pays for some public art, but then we're also saying we're gonna use that money to, to maintain it, which is a government function, or it's sort of like dead, asking a developer to dedicate a road and then saying, oh yeah, by the way, you know, we're, we want you to maintain it as well. I would feel more comfortable if there was a way to limit the maintenance to the contributions that were paid by the municipality, because that, we don't run into the, the tax problem.
So are you saying that, that you would, that item number six, you want to see eliminated, and that, and that ultimately the maintenance, these other things, maintenance, repair, insurance, is covered by the one percent that's paid by the city?
I, I'm not saying it has to be eliminated, you can do what you were suggesting, singulate it out, move it around, bump it up to seven point five percent, whatever you had in mind, but just kind of a parenthetical comment, but these, the maintenance, repair funds will come from the, will, will, will only be used to the extent that the funds were made available from the municipal construction contributions. Something, I, I can work on the wording while you're talking and...
Okay, so, yeah, so why don't, why don't you figure, figure that wording out? That those funds would come from that in a limited, a limited size. So that was, that was my comment. Judging by, by what's been said, I think there, there may be the votes for this. If that's the case, I would like to suggest, once again, that if we're going to, if we're going to approve this, or make a motion to approve it for a vote, that some of these changes be made, and that we basically send our version to city council as, as the, as, as what we're suggesting. So going down my list, and then, once again, people can pipe up if they don't want to see this. Obviously, 10, 5, 3, we change eighty-five percent to ninety-five. Number six is being worked on in some feverish manner by legal, so we'll wait to hear what they have to say with that.
I, I think I'm in favor of eliminating it completely to make it clean for legal and just for future. I, I agree that it is a function of the government that needs to occur there, and so for that reason, I think we should just eliminate it.
Just eliminate entirely, rather than, and figure that the...
The city council, I mean, we're only making a recommendation to the city council, and I think that's something that they need to look at, and we can point that out, but we should eliminate it to make it clean for them.
For legal?
Yes.
Yeah, I just, I disagree. So I don't know if we can vote on pieces of this, or how, how we can...
So you would rather not see a percentage be allocated from somewhere, for instance, from the one percent that's being taken from municipal projects?
Yeah.
Because ultimately, the money is gonna come from municipal one, I mean...
Yes, either way, it comes from...
Right. So at least that way, we get the funding, but it's not being paid by anybody but, but the city.
Yes.
Does that work?
That's equitable.
Okay. Did you hear that, Mr. Sinco?
I know.
Excellent.
Actually, working on the language.
We, we are, we are deal-cutting here. We want to eliminate number six, but we want to make sure that a, that percentage is coming out of the one percent municipal things for maintenance. So whatever amount we're, we're suggesting is a, is a cap out of that maintenance, but all maintenance, repairs, and insurance are, are gonna be coming out of the municipal fees.
Okay, yeah, that was, that was the language I was working on.
Okay. And since people did not agree with the in lieu of fee, then I will skip that, and the final thing is the funding mechanism, and once again, I suggest that we do a half a percent across the board for anybody that takes out a, a, a permit, except the municipal things, and those are one percent. So then there's skin in the game.
I do have one question for Mr. Smitherman. The reason I proposed this is because you suggested that there would be municipal projects where in lieu fee would be paid as opposed to actually creating art.
I apologize. Most of, they would try to build the art onsite, just as the library did with their sculptures, both internal and external, but it is a public facility. The, the senior center has art inside as well in our different facilities. They could build in the parks, most of our facilities are built on park property, so whether it's indoor or out. Or they could choose if, and I'm trying to remember correctly, I apologize, to, if it doesn't fit, like you said, that it's a possibility that we could use that funding at a better location.
Yeah, well, that was what I was saying, that there would be some revenues, I mean, this proposal limiting it to that account wouldn't work if there's no money actually being contributed. So are you confident that there would be sufficient funds generated from payment of in lieu fees for municipal projects rather than the provision of art to, to fund whatever maintenance would be required?
Yeah, absolutely. With the Bonavista Park project, for example, it's, it's over, you know, a million dollars, and we won't be spending all one million dollars within the park, I'm sorry, for the one percent fee won't be all spent within the park, so the, the balance could go into that fund as well.
And maybe, Mr. Sinco, maybe, maybe we cap this at, at what two and a half percent of the overall would be, and we cap that as how much maximum can be spent out of that one percent. Do you understand what I'm saying? If, if twenty-five thousand dollars, if two and a half percent of the overall thing was twenty-five thousand dollars, as calculated, then the maximum that could be taken out of that one percent municipals is twenty-five thousand dollars. I'm trying to get a cap on, on maintenance and repairs.
Well, I'm not, I, I would have to defer to Dennis on, on the, whether that would be practical. The cap, I mean, I think that, my understanding is that the maintenance or the restoration aspect would be pretty de minimis. I'm not sure a cap would be necessary if we limited it to the funds that are, what, that are paid by municipal...
Okay.
Contracts. I, I mean, I'm not sure. I would, I would want your input on that as well.
Absolutely. While the general day-to-day maintenance is, is de minimis, the, the restoration could, could cost, so I understand that a cap would be appropriate, but not all art pieces are gonna fail at, at one time. So I understand a cap of two and a half to five percent, two and a half would be, would work in, in the process of restoration, as we'll continue to build that pool up and use it as needed.
You're not buying yourself another staff member, are you?
Just trying, just trying.
I, I'm just, I, I just want to know. I didn't hear a yes or no for that.
As far as the two and a half percent for maintenance?
Yeah, you're not buying yourself another staff member.
No, the five percent is completely added.
Just checking.
Two and a half percent, no.
Just wanted to know. Okay, so we're waiting for text from legal.
Well, I guess, I'm, I'm ready. I just wanted to know what you wanted to do with number six.
Well, it looks like we are eliminating number six...
Okay.
Entirely, and then we're using your text for the funding mechanism for the items within number six, maybe as a different line item, or, or a replacement for six, or if it's being thrown into someplace else. That, that's your call as to where that thing is being dropped.
Okay, well, I guess, I don't know, do you want it in the...
We wanted to eliminate six for, for your legal concerns.
Yes, I appreciate that.
So if you want to substitute six with your new text, and that would not jeopardize it?
How about this? We could leave six there and then just add this at the end of the sentence. So it would read, maintenance, repair, and insurance of public art and public property, then the following language would be added, provided, however, that these expenses will be paid only from funds paid into the city art fund from in lieu fees paid in connection with municipal construction projects.
Okay, that sounds...
Does that work for you, Dennis?
Okay. And this, and, and what we're discussing here, the half a percent across the board, that eliminates the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, the hundred-thousand levels, all these different things.
The five homes.
Five homes, that everything, it just...
We haven't gotten to that yet.
Okay.
That's next.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, that would just fix number six there.
Okay. Okay. Then what, okay, then let's move on to that. So the discussion is that we're going to suggest half a percent across the board for any building permits, regardless of the levels. So that whole 250,000 level, the 100,000 level, the whatever, that just gets washed away. It's just straight up a half a percent.
So you would want to, Chairman Dickerson, members of the commission, you would want to eliminate 10-5.05B?
5B, right.
Okay. Because it would be any building permit, regardless of its valuation. So we renumber the letters there accordingly, and we leave A...
Or reword B, so then that's where we put the half a percent, and we just eliminate the...
No, the half a percent is in the subsection A above.
Okay.
Yeah, that covers everything, yeah.
An amount of, one half of 1% of the building development costs. I mean, are we still going to, regardless of the building development costs, or are we going to go with the building permits? I guess I need direction on that. I was a little confused.
It's pulling a permit. I think that, I mean, that's, that's the numbers that I had got, I had looked into was permit valuation. So it's...
Well, building development costs are defined as the construction costs declared on all building permit applications. So I guess, is that the same as the building permit valuation?
No.
Building permits valued at 100,000.
Is there a differentiation? What's the differentiation here?
I would say it's probably safe to just not have B.
Yeah.
And have A covered your, what you intend to do.
That's what I, I'm thinking as well. And then in the definition, the definition of, of private development...
Do we even worry about the...
Yeah, we do, because, it's G, it's 10-5.02.
Right.
G. Private development means any new construction or addition to an existing development or building on private property, whether residential or commercial, not owned by a public entity, period.
Yeah.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. And then same with E, we'll take out the greater than 50,000. Oh, no, sorry, that's a municipal project.
Yeah, municipal project.
Yeah, so, right, okay.
Private development, 50,000.
Yeah, so we're eliminating with building development.
Yeah, the city's paying 1% already, so it matters. I think that covers it.
Well, that, okay. So that's what we're suggesting. We're, if, if we want to move forward with that, we are going to need a...
Oh, one other thing.
Yes, sir.
Section, there's two, Section 10-5.06s. We need to renumber one of them, oh seven.
Oh, right.
Oh, I see.
Right.
So it would just be 10-5.07?
Right.
For installation and maintenance?
Yeah, exactly. And then we renumber, we re-letter the 10-5.05.
Right.
Right.
Duh, duh. Okay, and so, as I was saying, it's a resolution, and it's number 2734 with modifications as discussed. Do we have a motion?
I move that by resolution, we recommend to the city council that we adopt public art, let's see, what are we doing? We, we adopt the Resolution Number 2734 with the public art program ordinance as edited at tonight's meeting.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. We are needing a roll call, please.
Commissioner White O'Neal?
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
No.
Chair Dickerson?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. The motion carries, the resolution carries. Thank you very much. Good luck in the city council.
Yeah.
All right, let us move on quickly to item number six, oral reports from planning, planning commissioners and staff. And we'll, we'll give everybody a couple minutes to move along, if that's what they care to, although I'm sure their civic interest probably pours into the thought of hearing our oral reports. I see it. Look how giddy they are at the thought of it.
Commissioner, chief of...
He can't, except that he's split.
I'm sure he's long gone. He's had a glass of wine already.
Let's not have any illusions that he's out there on that cold bench, okay?
Does he got a portion of his 75 bucks?
All right. Oral reports from planning commission and staff. Staff, any oral reports?
We currently do not have any items for the next planning commission agenda. That's the first meeting of August, so likely your next meeting will be the study session in August.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dennis, do you have any, anything you want to say? No? Where you got your jacket? Nothing like that? All right. Okay, anything from up here? Look, look, she's just, she wants to go. She wants to. And with that, I close this hearing. Thank you very much, everyone. Good night.
Thank you.